Okay, cool. Very cool. All right. We'll go ahead and get started then. I'll call this meeting to order for the January 21st, 2025 Planning, Development and Building Committee, 5:32 PM. At this time, I will, in the presence of time, I'll just open us up in prayer if that's okay with you, Mr. Chenness and Mr. Frittel.
Go for it, sir.
All right. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for this time together, Lord. We just give you praise and thanks for the good work you have begun in us. Father, we pray for the emergency response team, firefighters, police, EMS, the folks at our EOC as we prepare for this winter storm coming. Lord, we just pray for safety and hedge protection around those folks. And then for our citizens, of course, Lord, pray that we enjoy the winter weather and that everyone comes out safe and sound and are able to experience the joy of snow and fellowship and fun safely, Lord. And we just pray for this community. Lead and guide this time. Bless us. Bless this meeting. Give us wisdom and a sermon to do the work you have given us to do, to bring new glory and good to our community. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. All right. So at this time, I will ask Ms. Reinderson for, we have a public hearing and recommendation for second reading of an ordinance to amend the Dorchester County Zone and Land Development Standards, Ordinance Number 04-13, as amended with respect to Article 7, to amend Section 7.1.6, 7.2.6, 7.3.7, 7.4.8, 7.1, excuse me, 7.5.9, 7.7.8, 7.8.7, 7.9.8, 7.10.7, 7.12.8, and 7.13.6, all bearing the title Maximum Impervious Service, and Section 7.4.6, 7.7.7, 7.8.6, 7.9.7, 7.10.6, 7.12.7, and 7.13.5, all bearing the title Lot and Building Requirements. With respect to Article 7, to amend Sections 8.1.6, 8.2.7a3, 8.2.7d3, 8.2.7c3, 8.2.7d3, and 8.3.7, all bearing the title Maximum Impervious Service. With respect to Article 9, to amend Sections 9.1.8, 9.3.7, bearing the title Maximum Impervious Service. And with respect to Article 10, to amend Section 10.7.6a, Table 1 and Table 2, and Section 10.7.6b, Table 3 and Table 4, Lot and Building Standards. The purpose of this amendment is to update impervious surface standards and provide consistency between the various sections. At this time, I will open the public hearing.
Mr. Crosby, prior to opening the public hearing, based upon the advice of the county attorney, we will reschedule the public hearing to a time when we can meet in person. That appears to be the second meeting in February, but we will receive public comments if there are any, and we will receive the staff report from Ms. Reinderson.
Outstanding. Well, I jumped the gun. I apologize. I appreciate all of you humoring me while I read that, all those potential changes in amendments. So, thank you, Mr. Ward.
I missed half of it. Eddie, can you read it again?
Mr. Crosby, before Ms. Reinderson begins here, I just wanted to welcome you to the chairmanship of the PDB. We will try to get a countywide rezoning scheduled here before long so you can read all of those TMS numbers as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chenness. I appreciate that. And I humbly and gratefully appreciate the privilege and the honor to assume the mantle of leadership here for PDB. You have done an outstanding job in mentoring all of us in this arena. And my only hope is to not only carry the baton, but fill and exceed the shoes laid before me. So, thank you, sir. And Ms. Reinderson, of course, we couldn't do it without you as well. And Mr. Ward and the staff, you guys are first class. So, thank you all so much for this awesome privilege. And I'll turn it over to you.
Great. I will go ahead and attempt to share my PowerPoint here if it will. Give me a second. Okay. Are you able to see my PowerPoint? Yep. Okay, perfect. Get it slide show. Okay, perfect. So, all of those amendments, all those sections that you read off in the title there, it's all relating to impervious surface. And this text amendment is being brought forward by staff, although the initial issue was pointed out to us by the development community, by an engineer. So, most of the substantive changes to the ordinance are occurring within the cluster subdivision section or the townhouse section, which is where we noticed the issue in the ordinance. So, right now, when you're doing a cluster, obviously, that allows you to do smaller lot sizes. But because we didn't write the impervious surface standard into the cluster ordinance, it's reverting back to R1 and R2 district standards. And those lots are larger lots. So, the impervious surface limitations right there is limited about 50% of the lot, which isn't going to work when you're doing the 4,000 or 6,000 square foot lot. So, working with the engineering community, we work to make sure that the standards we're increasing it to, which you should be able to see on your screen here, which varies between 60 to 75% impervious, depending on the lot size, actually work with the engineering community to make sure that that was still in line with their stormwater calculations for runoff. And so, I think we've hit a good spot where we're making sure that our standards are lining up with stormwater standards, but we're still making sure that the lots that we're creating are buildable for the home builders. We also went through the same exercises with respect to the townhouse lots, making sure that was also set at 50%, and we bumped that up to 70% to be in line. The rest of the ordinance standards that are being changed is really working to update and standardize the language that we have. So, we're not necessarily changing the percentage. We're just updating the language because the language was confusing in most of the districts, the way that it was written. And we have that example there on the screen on the PowerPoint for you. It's, you'll see the language is pretty much the same. It's just rewritten in a way that's easier for us to interpret and enforce. And that goes through most of the zoning districts that we have, residential and even commercial. So, that's the bulk of what we've done. We also realized, it was pointed out, that not included with this amendment is that the language in the existing ordinance that we have still references DHEC instead of the Department of Environmental Services. So, I think we will go through and make that update. And when you get your third reading red lines, you'll see that those updates have been made as well. But again, that's not a substantive change. It's just correcting the name of the organization in there. So, this went to Planning Commission back in November and was recommended for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Reinderson.
A second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion?
I think this is critical for us, for people that want to put a swimming pool or something behind their house, to be able to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. And as I shared with Ms. Reinderson last week, when we had a chance to chat and debrief, having the multiple agencies connecting and communicating to make sure that we were aligning our standards, so to speak, is critical. So, thank you for doing that and having those cross-team meetings. And Mr. Ward, I'm sure you were involved in those as well. So, I agree. Mr. Frittel, I think this is key and a step in the right direction, for sure. So, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. It is unanimous. Motion passes. Do you have another motion?
I move to adjourn.
A second.
Well, as a privileged motion, we are, as Mr. Chenness would say, adjourned. Thank you all. Hey, Mr. Ward, real quick, or Mr. Walters, are we going to just stay on this channel and roll right into the, are we going to a different link for the full county, for the full council meeting?
We are still live, and you can go unmuted, turn off your camera, and we'll resume the main council meeting at 6:00.
On this link?
On this link, yep.
Okay, fantastic. We'll see you back here at 6:00.
Yep, thank you.
I'm going to give a bit of an opening here before I officially open the meeting.
Aye.
I'm checking here. I know I have a quorum at least, and it does appear that I have at least four votes in favor of that.
Yes.
In any case, we're at least four in favor of accepting those minutes, which is enough. The next item on the agenda is a recognition of Dorchester County employee with twenty years or more of full-time consecutive service with the Employee Longevity Program. And some of these things we're going to, we're going to do virtually today and we're going to have them because they deserve to be honored for that kind of service to the county. But we're going to do this again with them in front of us as well. We hope they'll show up before us.
So Mr. Chairman, Julie Fralix Byers was the single employee that we were going to recognize with thirty-five years of service. We have provided her with her check and PIN, but we plan to bring her back so she can be recognized formally before county council on February eighteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. The next item on the agenda is request to address council. And I believe at one point we did have several that, and we're going to try to make this work as best as possible. It appears that we no longer have anyone looking to address. No, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, just listening. Here's Mr. Hearn. All right. Very good. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Ward, this is a very good correspondence to have.
Mr. Chairman and counsel, I'm excited that the Congress approved the Water Resources Development Act of twenty twenty-four that included the Lakes Marion and Moultrie Project, known to us as the Lake Marion Regional Water Agency. Their approval, which was a bipartisan approval, a vote within the Senate of ninety-seven to one and a vote within the House of three hundred and fifty-nine to thirteen, which I think is really speaking to the importance of this particular piece of legislation, included an increase for the Lake Marion Regional Water Agency, a federal authorization from a hundred and sixty-five million dollars to two hundred and thirty-five million dollars, which is a seventy million dollar increase. Very specifically with respect to Dorchester County, that includes the St. George Reach along US Highway fifteen, as well as the Shady Grove Reach along US Highway one seventy-eight. Letters of thanks have been sent on behalf of the agency by the agency chairman, Mr. Johnny Wright. And so all of our members of Congress have been thanked for their support in this regard. This is exciting. We may have some additional news coming to you soon with an additional appropriation. Again, this is the authorization which allows seventy-five percent federal funds to be spent towards twenty-five percent of non-federal funds under this particular project, which dates back to nineteen ninety-two in the original authorization.
I think, Mr. Ward, if I might, just to comment on that, I know it can be confusing to maybe some of those watching and even sometimes to council. The difference in authorization and appropriation is a pretty key point there.
So the authorization means that the project is allowed to receive funding. Subsequent to that, year over year, as projects are approved, appropriations are then sent. That's the actual money to fund the projects. But without that authorization, the project would not be able to move forward with any additional work. And we were approaching our cap at a hundred and sixty-five million. So this two thirty-five allows us to move forward with our five-year capital improvement plan, which includes those two projects again, the St. George Reach and the Shady Grove Reach here in Dorchester County.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. The next item on the agenda are guests. Mr. Denise Christmas, Deputy Administrator, Chief Financial Officer, and the presentation of the twenty twenty-four monthly budget and the remainder. I'll let Ms. Christmas do those introductions.
Good evening. I'm here to present the December year-to-date report. And so I am happy to report that all of our funds, our expenses and expenditures are below our fifty percent mark this year, except the water and wastewater fund. But that's only because their debt service, it was paid for in the first half of the year, which put them a little over the fifty percent mark to the sixty-five percent mark. Other than that, revenues are coming in adequately and expectedly at this time in the year. I will have a more definitive report next month, whenever our January collections for our property taxes, whenever those items are collected and posted. I'll have a better, clear, more definitive report then. And our ARPA expenditures are at eighty-seven percent. And as you know, we obligated, formally obligated all of those funds before the end of the year. So we met our deadline there. And that's all I have to report on the financial side unless you all have questions. Okay. And so I think is Adam Alm to present the capital projects report? I think he's next.
Yep. All right. Good evening, Chairman Jennings, members of council, and Mr. Ward for the capital projects update. I'll begin with Jedbert Fire Station. ADC and Boomerang has provided a test fit. The feasibility of the site is under staff review. The LEC renovation project work orders were executed in December, capturing the remaining items for the project completion. Call for final inspection is the end of January. Next use of five hundred North Main Street, Furman will be presenting to the bar on January thirtieth. Foreigner's Office, a meeting with Tuft Co. was held on December eighteenth to discuss project timeline, and they will be ready to break ground in February. Oakbrook Sports Complex, the nationwide eighteen permit from Army Corps was received on December the second. Land Plan held a meeting with Dorchester County Engineering to review stormwater requirements last month. Permitting applications for the Department of Environmental Services in Dorchester County Stormwater were completed last Friday to reflect the jurisdictional wetlands update. Pine Trace Park, scope of work for the month of January consists of framing the kayak pavilion, tree removal in the playground area, sidewalk cores, fencing of the dog carts, on stabilization and mechanical outfitting. Right now, the project timeline for completion is April of twenty twenty-five, which is fluid. St. George Healthcare Facility permits are underway. A work order was executed for construction services in December to meet the ARPA deadline requirements. Summers Corner Fire and EMS pricing proposals were received on January thirteenth. Proposals are under review. Permit updates will be provided as soon as the agencies forward their comments. Summerville Library, TerraCon is completing Case One Environmental Assessment. Site visit will be held before the end of month. Swan Drive, the remaining items for project completion are asphalting of the driveway apron, site stabilization, signage, and the entrance gate. And that concludes general construction. You don't have any questions? Think sunshine is up.
Thank you, Adam. And good evening, Mr. Ward, Mr. Chairman, and members of council. I'll be providing the public works, stormwater and transportation updates for First Bend Road and Rice Mill Drive. The one and a half million dollar grant that the county received was not for stormwater, but was actually for a water and sewer economic infrastructure project. So we will be preparing an application for a basic infrastructure grant to be submitted by the March deadline. And final design is seventy percent complete. The design-build bridge replacement package, Summers Drive and Pointer Drive, both of those projects, right-of-way acquisition are underway as well as permitting. And for the Deer Run Bridge, we held the public information meeting on December twelfth. SEDOT has since issued a weight restriction for the bridge as of January sixth, which would prohibit fire trucks and school buses from being able to cross the bridge. We are currently preparing plans and a contract amendment to install a temporary access road as a detour for vehicles that exceed the posted weight limit. And we will be continuing to coordinate with emergency services and the school district once we implement that detour route and the load rate posting. For Spring Road, construction utility relocations are complete and the contractor has remobilized to the site to begin working on the Highway fifteen end of the project. For Maple Street widening, the new realigned intersection and traffic signal at Parsons and Maple Street opened to traffic on November twenty-sixth. Drainage installations continue along Maple Street to the end of the project limits, as well as grading work on US Highway seventy-eight. For the Sawmill Branch Trail Extension at Oakbrook, preliminary plans have been updated to avoid a thirty-inch sewer force main conflict, and hydraulic modeling is currently underway. We were awarded a one point twenty-five million dollar transportation alternatives grant for construction, and the grant kickoff meeting with the COG and SEDOT was held earlier today. The SC twenty-seven widening project, our bid package was submitted to the Economic Development Administration for approval, and upon approval, the project will be advertised for construction. For the US seventy-eight Phase Three A project, right-of-way acquisition, utility coordination, and final plan development are all underway. For US seventy-eight Phase Three B, SEDOT issued the right-of-way authorization on November thirteenth. So title searches are underway to start the right-of-way acquisition process. For Central Avenue and Parsons Road improvements, field surveys are underway through the end of January. For Dorchester Road improvements, we are currently updating our traffic study to consider interchange alternatives at Latson Road and Old Trolley Road, and we are developing concept plans for these alternatives. We are also looking at alternative delivery construction methods so that we can expedite this project. For Delamar Highway improvements, field surveys are underway through April. For Linger Longer Drive Extension, the preliminary plans are complete and hydraulic modeling is underway. We will be holding a design field review meeting on January thirtieth. For the Miles Jameson Road improvements, field surveys are underway through February. For Orangeburg Loop, field surveys are underway through the end of January. For Salisbury Loop, field surveys are complete, and we are developing preliminary plans to present to the public in the next few months. For US seventeen A widening, field surveys are underway through March. For seventeen A, the temporary signal at Village Ponds Drive, the construction contract has been executed and the pre-construction meeting will be held on January twenty-fourth. The construction duration will be thirty days. There is an eight to ten week lead time for the radar detection equipment, and the contractor is working to try to expedite that, but we won't let that hold up construction. So we'll continue moving forward. And lastly, the Westcott Boulevard Project, field surveys are underway through the end of January. And that concludes my updates. If there are no questions, I will turn it over to Mr. Larry Harper.
Well, good evening, council. This is actually a great day. Actually, in ten sixty-six A.D., the Normans invaded what's called Great Britain, indicating a change in the British rule to become more Anglo-Saxon and reflected by being Normans as opposed to the regular British culture. So for the projects, for second phase of Stratton, Barrett Streets Rehab, contractors on site working to tap the water main, Jason Two, has the phosphate. For the D.C. Regional Water Interconnection Phase One, project plan's complete. Project is ready to be posted for bids once the remaining permits have been received. Eastman Acquisition will be ongoing through this month, and any eastments are not easily obtained will be filed for condemnation. For DSS, the pump station for force main, Phase One contract is scheduled to start work March of twenty-five. Phase Two is ready to be posted for bids once the remaining permits are received. Eastman acquisitions have ceased, and any other remaining eastments will be filed for condemnation. Hollyville Pump Station, force main reversal, pump station location has been finalized, are working on purchasing the property from the owner. And the force main design from, force main design from the pump station is ongoing. For Highway one seventy-eight water line extension, this project is being funded by a set aside grant administered by the RIA. We have reached the ninety, eighty percent design on the project, and we are waiting on our responses from the permit agencies. Highway fifteen to I twenty-six interchange, project design is ongoing, currently discussing the design change order from the engineer. For lower Dorchester wastewater treatment plant expansion to sixteen MGD, we've got forming and pouring activities continuing for the erosion basin suspended slabs, secondary clarify walls, and other elevated slabs, maintenance building and the UV structures. So a lot of concrete is being poured there, and the structures are beginning to take shape. So if you hadn't had a chance to take a look, you might want to schedule a trip down there. If you wanted to escort a tour, let me know. I'll be more than willing to show you around to show you where your money is going to. For Maple Streets Relocates, the contract is working to install the final service sewer laterals under Maple Street. For the Pecan Tree Site Extension, still waiting to receive that railroad permit, and we continue coordination with that project design team. Poplar Grove to Red Top, construction contract has been awarded. Contract is mobilizing for construction. Revised pumping hall request has been sent to DTS for an additional twenty-seven ERUs for the peninsula subdivision. For Pump Station seventy-two upgrade, Ash River High School, project's approximately eighty percent complete. Work is still ongoing on the electrical building. Pump Station Ten Influent Rehab, we've actually completed all the project data, and we've got several projects that have been identified to improve, to remove some of the INI, securing in that particular drainage basin. For Pump Station Twenty, Force Main Redversion, Willland High School, this project was awarded an RIA grant. There's a grants meeting, startup meeting, was actually scheduled for tomorrow to discuss the modifications necessary for our plans for RIA funding. We'll see if that occurs or not just due to the weather. For the Reedville Waterline Upgrade, that project has reached sixty percent completion. The Shady Grove and one seventy-eight area pump station and force main, ongoing coordination with our engineer for project design. That project has reached a eighty-five percent milestone. Summer Haven Waterline Improvement, projects in design, we are working on this eastment exhibit for eastment acquisition. For Sweet Prior Subdivision Sewer Line Extension, we've actually conducted a pre-bid meeting. We had a bid opening on the ninth of January, so we expect to work that project shortly. For water line replacement in Pepper Ridge Area, we have reached a thirty percent design status on that project. And for the water main from extension to D.C. Career and Technology Center and Harleyville Middle Schools, the installation of that pipeline is ongoing. They started trenchless activities. They started trenchless activities already this month, and we actually anticipate completion of that project by the end of March. And for the Winding Reach Project, we've received a permit to operate for the tank, and we've actually started monitoring and flushing that tank the last couple of weeks. The reach has a partial permit to operate, and the all reach is sparse because we have not actually made that connection into the Willland High School. That connection needs to be scheduled when the school is not in session, so it'll probably be scheduled for spring break. And with that, that concludes my report. Any questions? Well, thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you. I want to thank Ms. Christmas, Mr. Davis, Ms. Tragus, and Mr. Harper. Obviously, if, again, I'm gonna keep hammering on this, I guess, somewhat fluids, well, we would like it to stay a fluid situation. It probably won't stay fluid actually a little bit later this evening. It may be a little bit more solid. One of the states of matter, but appreciate everybody kind of adjusting schedules to be here with the staff, with a couple IT folks sitting here, with some of our deputy administrators. And of course, our county clerk of council here, I would be remiss if I didn't get that in before we get into the deeper stuff tonight. Next item on the agenda is county administrator's time, Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and council, I have several items for your consideration with your consent. I'd like to take the first reading and referrals, which are both recommended by planning and zoning staff and the planning commission together. So these would be first reading and referrals to the Planning, Development, and Building Committee for the following, the first being rezoning request number 926, Jake Barini to rezone 13.84 acres located at Highway 78 near Ridgeville. TMS number 098000090 from Agricultural Residential District AR to Commercial Light Industrial District CLI. Rezoning request number 927 for George Tupper III to rezone 6.26 acres located at 754 Orangeburg Road near Somerville. TMS number 144000038 and 178 from Single Family Residential District R2 to Neighborhood Commercial District CN. Rezoning request number 928 for Janet Lieber to rezone 2.12 acres located at Highway 78 near Ridgeville. TMS number 098000240 from Agricultural Residential District AR to Commercial Light Industrial District CLI. Again, my request on all three is first reading and referral to the Planning, Development, and Building Committee for public hearing and recommendations.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second. There is a motion and multiple seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? We are six in favor. Mr. Ward?
Next item I have for your consideration is a motion to appoint and commission Chris Garbasiak and Marlena Leida as code enforcement officers to issue summons for Dorchester County Code of Ordinances Chapter 4, Animals, and Chapter 14, Environment pursuant to the South Carolina Code of Law Section 4-9-145. And this comes as a recommendation by their supervisor, Ms. Shannon, the Director of Neighborhood Services, and asks that council appoint and commission those officers.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think the only discussion that I will make is that we're appointing and commissioning tonight, they will be officially commissioned. I know, I think Ms. Leida actually attempted to call in tonight, but again, it was not necessary. All we needed was us to approve this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're unanimous. Mr. Ward?
Final item I have for your consideration is a motion to appoint and commission Colton L. Johnson and Jason Decorte as solid waste environmental services officers to issue summons for violations of Article 4 litter control of Chapter 34, solid waste of the Dorchester County, South Carolina Code of Ordinances, and Article 3 nuisances of Chapter 14, environment of Dorchester County, South Carolina Code of Ordinances. And I ask that council appoint and commission these two officers.
Is there a motion?
So moved. So moved. Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. The next item on the agenda is committee reports. Mr. Crosby?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chenus, thank you. Earlier this evening, the Planning, Development, and Building Committee held our meeting regarding a public hearing for TMI, whoops, I lost my screen. Give me one second. I apologize. Pull this up real quick. There we go. A second reading for an ordinance to amend the Dorchester County zoning and land development standards, ordinance number 0413, as amended with respect to Article 7. However, per Mr. Ward, and fairness to the folks who would like to be present for the public hearing, we deferred that to our next in-person meeting, but we did vote on the second hearing, so to speak, Mr. Chenus, and it was unanimous.
You've heard the, make sure my mic is on, you've heard the reports of the committee, all in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Crosby.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I gotta flip pages here as well. The next item on the agenda, appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments to boards and commissions tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hearn?
Thank you, sir. I have five tonight, and if it's okay, we'll take them all at once. These are all reappointments. Thank you. The first is Kelly Collins to the Board of Assessment Appeals. Next, Mr. Ed Nolan, Aeronautics Board. Next, Mr. Robert Pratt, Planning Commission. Next, Teresa McKnight to the Grievance Committee. And finally, Mr. Joe Deppney, Parks and Recreation.
That is in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Just, and just to point out, kind of to clean some of this stuff up, Mr. Hearn was appointing them based on our committees, they serve through the end of our active term. So the reappointment from that standpoint, through the end of the active term, the most recent election, anyone, and Ms. Conrad is gonna send everybody the list of those appointees that may have been in holdover status from our standpoint on the county committees directly, as we research some of the rest of those. And I'll ask everybody just to reach out to those appointees and make sure that they're willing to serve and try to get them reappointed, so we can get everybody updated and on the same page from that standpoint. So you'll see that from Ms. Conrad in the next week or so, and we'll see if we can't get that, get all cleaned up. I appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is county attorney's time. Mr. Frampton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to the two items under my time, the first being the public hearing to receive input regarding the proposed leasing of county property owned at Sierra Street and Railroad Avenues in St. George, that will be held on the 18th of February and re-advertised. Likewise, the request for approval of the county administrator to sign, the two lease agreements with respect to that same property will also be postponed to February the 18th, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Frampton. And again, I, just to be very clear, our goal was to, they were advertising, our goal would have been to hold these in St. George this evening, but due to an abundance of caution based on the weather, and to make certain that we allow the public to attend those public hearings, which would be required in a public hearing, we have moved those to February to that next meeting in St. George. Are there any further motions?
We adjourn.
There is a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Second.
We adjourn. Thank you.
Aye. Be safe.
Be warm, everybody.
Good night, y'all. Thank you.